Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's session of June twenty fifth. Danielle, we do a roll call, please.
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Blush. Councilmember Sterns is absent tonight. Councilmember Gilmore. Mayor Onisco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman. Councilmember Sap.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Danielle. Tonight, Police Chief Chris Costad and Captain Dan Patton have information for us about license plate recognition.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. I appreciate the time you've afforded us tonight to talk about this. Myself and Captain Pat have been working on this project for a few months now and are really excited ever to the point that we can actually introduce you to it appropriately and get you as much information as possible about it. Just real quickly from me, the Flock system, it's an automatic license plate reader system. We have, and I'll talk about later, I'll show you on some mapping photos that I have. We have strategic locations that we have located in the city that would be beneficial for us for identifying vehicles incoming into the city. And these cameras essentially will automatically read the plate. They don't take pictures of the passengers or anything like that. They store the information. And we can detect stolen vehicles or plates on vehicles. And I think one of the basic things to understand about this and why are we doing this is because anyone who's rolling into our city with a stolen car or stolen plates on their car, they're not here for honest business, right? They're doing something else. They're gonna go steal another car, they're gonna go steal someone's property, they're gonna go to Walmart and steal something. This is why they're rolling around stealing a stolen car. They want to be detected, or they have warrants for their arrest. Also, we can detect wanted vehicles that would come from other jurisdictions where there may be investigations. There's probable cause for their arrest for certain crimes. We can get hits on those, missing persons, missing children that are associated vehicles. We can get alerts on that. And it also helps us with our investigations. I know for, I have good reason to believe that if we had this system in last year, we probably, we have three unsolved homicides in the city right now, and they're all open, I believe. But it will probably be a lot closer to solving if we had these cameras in place at that time, because we have reason to believe that these people fled in vehicles in places where we have cameras and we could have identified them. So we are joined by Captain Patton. He's gonna talk about money issues and grants. Chief Ryan Swilin here, he's gonna chime in real quick. And then also Kristen McLeod from Flock, she's gonna be doing the main PowerPoint for you and showing you this program. So I'm gonna kick it to Ryan and let him.
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I wanted, when I talked with Chief Costad about this, I said, can I come and advocate for it in favor of it? Because I've seen the results of it. I just talked with Deputy Detective Dylan Helsner this morning. And we actually just solved a robbery as a result of the Flock cameras in Centralia and other locations. When we knew this person was associated with those locations, we were able to nail down where he was. And it was a critical piece of evidence that allowed us to solve it. Some of the other things that we've been doing, I was first introduced to it by the former Assistant Chief of the State Patrol, who's now the Chief of Medina Police Department. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Medina, but that's where Bill Gates and a lot of very, very rich people live, and it's one road through. And they have six Flock cameras. Just to give you an idea, that's what we have the unlimited source of money. You wanna make sure you're saying you do that type of thing. But in our community, I believe Alderbrook has already purchased Flock cameras. I am speaking with Lake Village tomorrow, because they have about three different ways in and out. They're looking at it. A great view communities already looked at it. I just spoke, I think, two weeks ago to Lake Cushman. They're looking at it. And what it's going to do, if we have the ones in the city as well, it's all going to tie any activity that we see on a vehicle that may be a suspect. For example, we had a homicide this morning. We've already solved it because we caught the guy at the scene. But if he would have fled and went into the city, we could have searched for it, or if it comes through the camera, it gives us an opportunity to question the person. Right? It gives us that open door, at least somebody to question if we don't have a suspect. And it's a great tool. In Washington State, a lot of laws have limited law enforcement and our ability to investigate. And this is one thing. I'm not real big on Big Brother. Seeing everything that we do and tracking all of that, that's not what I'm advocating, but as far as crime solving, this is a great tool. And I give the information to my community groups throughout the county. And I know other counties are used. Thank you.
Do the counties talk to each other? I mean, yes, connected. And what about state, state?
I don't know about state, state. I haven't had that question answered. Maybe the person. Just wanna come up and fly, uh, fly camera station wide and talk to each other.
Is Kristen ready? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Sheriff. I feel like you all did my job for me. You did a wonderful introduction and overview of the system. So I'm happy to provide a bit more information and answer any questions at the end. My name is Kristen McLeod, and I'm a Community Engagement Manager with Flock Safety. So I have the privilege of going, attending many council and commission meetings and sharing information about Flock, what our technology does and doesn't do, and answer questions. So with that, I'm gonna share my screen and take you through a very brief presentation. I won't be doing death by PowerPoint tonight, I promise. Okay, can you see that okay? Screen, okay. But yes?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. So Flock's mission is to eliminate crime and to shape a safer future together. And we are incredibly grounded in that mission and committed to that. We started off, our founder and CEO created the company back in 2017 because he recognized that nationally police departments, law enforcement agencies, you know, crime is still occurring daily, sometimes unfortunately hourly in some communities. And resources are often stretched thin for departments. And we wanted to create a very efficient and effective tool so that law enforcement could gather objective evidence and really use it for precision policing. So we believe in utilizing technology for good. We believe that Flock helps multiply your police force. It protects first responders and the community. It collects and distributes objective evidence. And we also strongly believe in engaging the community to grow. We believe that this technology, this program should really fit your community's needs, and we've designed our system to do such. This is just an overview of what Flock Safety has to offer and a glimpse into our comprehensive system. Today, we're gonna be focusing on the Falcon license plate reading cameras, which is this little guy here. And we also have audio detection, live video. And these devices help capture the evidence, and then we decode that evidence by providing visual searches, our vehicle fingerprint search, which I'll get into a little bit more in detail in a moment. And what the decoding does, it really helps law enforcement officers make sense of mountains of evidence quickly and efficiently. And then we deliver that information in a variety of ways, including through our search function, through our map platform, alerts that, getting ahead of myself, alerts that come through real time and through mobile app, through patrol officers, MDTs. And we get the right evidence into the right hands of your officers. So back to our Falcon. This slide, oh my goodness, keep jumping around. This slide here is a really great representation of what the license plate reading cameras capture. Our cameras are focused on capturing vehicle facts. So they take still images of the rear of vehicles, and they take all that information that's captured and they organize it and maintain it for thirty days so that officers can utilize that and search for suspect vehicles. It's part of criminal investigation. We are infrastructure free, and we really want, we designed the system to be able to make it so that cities can kind of plug and play. We wanna take the maintenance off of your hands. We maintain the hardware. We provide software updates. And I'll show you a little bit more of what you get when you have a subscription with Flock. The cameras operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They're solar powered and motion activated. For our law enforcement customers, on the backend, we are integrated with the National Criminal Information Center. And those, as Chief and Sheriff mentioned, when a wanted vehicle, so a stolen vehicle is entered into the NCIC database, that information, we're integrated with them on the backend, so that if a stolen vehicle passes by one of the cameras in your community, your officers are alerted to that vehicle within about twenty seconds. We're also integrated with the National Center for Missing and Endangered Children, also known as Amber Alerts. We also have a custom hot list feature so that your officers can create an alert on a wanted vehicle. We're ethically built, and I will get more in detail on this piece because we believe it's really important. I talked a little bit about the real time alerts. This is a great, the slide before is a representation kind of just showing that we're capturing the vehicle, the rear of the vehicle. This is an actual footage from one of our license plate reading cameras. I mentioned vehicle fingerprint technology. So even without a plate on a vehicle, our system is able to identify different vehicle criteria with that time and location, providing objective investigative evidence. And that includes the vehicle make, body type, color, back racks, top racks. Can also identify bumper stickers, but not in detail. So just that a sticker is on the car, but nothing further in detail from that. So something really important is sharing what license plate recognition is not. We do not have any facial recognition tied to our license plate reading technology or any of our technologies. We are not collecting any biometric or sensitive information. Our technology is not used for tracking speed or parking violations. And something that's really important is that our data automatically deletes every thirty days. So when a vehicle passes by the camera, the image is captured. If it's not being utilized for a criminal investigation, at the thirty day mark of that lifecycle of that image, it's hard to delete it and unrecoverable unless the agency has downloaded that as part of a criminal investigation and is holding that in their evidence repository. So how does the technology deter and eliminate crime? It's proactive, as mentioned. It provides real time alerts of wanted vehicles to officers within about twenty seconds. It's investigative, so as clearance rates increase, increases, overall crime often decreases. And it's really, our system is providing that repository so officers can go back and investigate crimes and really get the objective evidence that's needed. It also serves as a deterrent. So when the cameras go up in communities, word spreads pretty quickly, and it makes it a lot less desirable for individuals who are intent on committing crime in your community to do so. We strongly believe in being a trusted partner. And that's why we built in privacy safeguards and accountability mechanisms into the system. So the footage is owned completely by the agency and the city and will never be sold or shared by Flock, period. Mentioned that thirty day data retention. This really takes the human bias out of crime solving by detecting only that objective data. And all of the data is securely stored. It's encrypted end to end and then held in the Amazon Web Services Government Cloud with very strict data security standards. Our accountability mechanisms include, we require a search reason. And that user number is also saved indefinitely, which provides the administration of the system and indefinite audit trail so that they can ensure that the system is being used in accordance with department policy. Again, we are not facial recognition, and there's no biometric or sensitive data collected. We are not connected to any registration data, such as DMV registration or any third party databases such as Carfax. And then something unique to Flock is our transparency portal. And this is part of your contract. It's no additional cost. But it provides a way for the city to share how the system is being utilized by the department. And this is an example from a department. And it's customizable for each community, for each police department. And this department has chosen to share what's detected, license plates and vehicle information, what's not detected, faces, people, gender, race. They have their acceptable use policy outlined, prohibited use policies outlined. This large block of text here is all of the law enforcement agencies that this particular agency has chosen to share their information with. And I believe there's a question before about sharing out of state. And that is possible, but it's up to each department because each customer owns their data, and they are in full control over who they share their data with. They've also included a link to their LPR policy down here. So again, it really gives the community a great way to see exactly how the department's using the system. Something else that's offered is our Insights Dashboard. And so while the Transparency Portal is a public facing webpage, the Insights Dashboard is for the administrators of the system where they can go in and see crime patterns and return on investment, our officers utilizing the system. Is it giving us the return that we need for our community safety? The audit search history is contained in that dashboard and for transparency purposes. While Flock maintains the health of the cameras and we proactively monitor their functionality, the administrators will also be able to take a peek into how their cameras are functioning and operating. So I mentioned before, these are the services that are included with the subscription. You get solar power, the installation and ongoing maintenance is included along with the hardware procurement as well as permitting. We handle all of that. We have a team that works on permitting. We provide user training. All of the data storage is included, as well as any software updates. So we are in Washington State. I believe we are at sixty-one agencies that are current Flock customers. And then to share some examples of how LPR is working in communities in Washington and elsewhere, some success stories, this is from Taquilla PD. So Taquilla officers received an alert that a stolen vehicle was in their area. They located the vehicle, and as they approached, another suspect in a separate stolen vehicle attempted to flee. They recovered that vehicle. They came back to their original stop and arrested that suspect who is also in possession of betanol and methamphetamine. Later that day, another Flock alert came through and alerted officers to a third stolen vehicle in that same parking lot where they were able to recover that third stolen vehicle. Yakima shared some metrics with us. From April to January, the LPR cameras helped them. They received alerts for five hundred ninety-six stolen vehicles. They were alerted to a hundred and thirty-three wanted people who were associated with the vehicles and were able to be alerted to thirty-three missing persons. This is from Liberty Lake, Washington. So officers in Spokane County deputies responded to reports of an assault that had occurred on a hiking trail. And the victim told authorities that an unidentified male suspect attacked her and then fled in her vehicle. Officers were able to search the Flock system, and they identified a suspect vehicle whose registered owner matched the description provided by the victim. So they were able to use that collateral information to, again, identify that suspect and make an arrest the following day. And that person is charged with second degree assault. And in addition to eliminating crime, something that we're really proud of at Flock is the impact that we've had on recovering missing persons. And this is from Port Washington, Wisconsin. Their police department shared an example of helping, LPR helping recover missing, endangered, vulnerable senior. At two forty-three PM, an analyst entered the missing senior's vehicle information into the Flock system. That same moment, an alert was set off. The vehicle happened to pass by one of the cameras. So officers were alerted to the vehicle's location and able to locate that person within about an hour and return them safely home. And then lastly, this is an example from Shambly, Georgia. A stranger on stranger abduction occurred, which these instances, thank goodness, are extremely rare. But time is critical in these situations. And this baby was taken from mom by two armed masked individuals. An amber alert was issued at twelve thirty in the afternoon. Officers conducted a search within Flock for the suspect vehicle. They created an alert, and a couple hours later, that suspect vehicle was located across state lines. And they were able to find the vehicle, initiate a felony stop, and arrest the suspects. And the baby was returned to mom within five and a half hours of that amber alert being issued, which is just incredible. So again, really providing that information to officers to locate a needle in a haystack quickly and efficiently when time is just critical. So with that, I believe I'm passing it back to Chief.
Wanted to discuss the potential sites of camera placement in the city. Was this all, you guys get maps like these in here? Okay, great. So there's twelve cameras in all that we're proposing for initial startup of this. Every camera is specifically located on a road that enters into the city. So, and they capture the plates as they enter the city. Now, they're leaving, wanna know who's coming in, so we have time to react to that. So we have one up, and these locations, myself and these locations were initially identified by Flock. And we're still fine tuning them a little bit. We're already coordinating with PUD on specific poles placements. We were out there for about an hour and a half today. We were looking at each pole individually, seeing if they would meet our needs. So we're having a good working relationship with PUD, and they're on board with this project as well. So we have a camera that, you know, on the north end, we have one that's initially, it's up near East Island Lake in Brockdale. That was, I think that one's gonna be moved a little bit more in towards the city after today's discussion, probably probably a lot closer to Wallace Nealon, I believe, just due to the availability of poles. The one on East Shelton Springs Road is gonna be near the Teragon Avenue intersection. So that's just gonna move like a block down from where it's it's placed on the map. Then you can also see that we have three cameras at Wallace Nealon and Olympic Highway North. One of the cameras is gonna capture incoming traffic that turns southbound onto Olympic Highway North. The other, another camera will catch vehicles continuing down Wallace Nealon towards Taco Bell in that area. And then the last camera is actually pointed at the traffic that's going to be entering into Walmart on the AMPM site. So we'll capture traffic whichever way it goes at that intersection. That's a heavily, heavily used intersection, and that's why we needed three there to keep track of that. And then there's another photo of the Wallace Nealon intersection that you can actually see which way these cameras are pointing at that intersection. Next is the downtown corridor. We're gonna have one up just at the beginning of the S-turns up Olympic Highway North near about the A Street dead end there near Jefferson. The one on Railroad is gonna be just past, it's about seventeen hundred block, I believe, of Railroad. Then we have one. There's one you'll see over near Mickey's Deli. That's probably gonna be about its location facing in towards that roundabout. There's one on, we have indicated on Front Street. That one actually looks like we're probably gonna have to, we're gonna move it down onto Highway Three. Initially, we stayed with Highway Three thinking that was, those were DOT poles, so we were trying to stay away from those with PUD. A PUD did have some poles down there and identified one where we can get traffic coming in on East Main Street. And then our last, last one of the south side, we have one near the intersection of Olympic Highway South and Arcadia, and then we'll have one out on Lake Boulevard just at the city limits to capture traffic coming in. Any questions about placement of cameras?
Why would we want them just for people coming into town and not leaving town? So we have a assault in town. Why do we wanna see if they're, which way they're going?
Yeah, great question. And we're trying to get initially, we're thinking of just sticking with the inside traffic so we know what's coming into the city, so we can get the numbers out of that. And in the future, this is just, this is just the beginning of this. In the future, yes, we would like to fill up some holes downtown, exiting traffic. So that's definitely in the future, but we wanna, we wanna focus primarily right now, what's coming into the city, because we're able to address that immediately.
And how fast is an alert? The police, I mean, everybody?
It works off, the police will get alerted in their police unit. They have, they have MDT or a computer. They'll have the programs they get, they get that notification in about twenty seconds or so of a suspect vehicle passing by those cameras. And they'll notify that location and vehicle description.
Cool, two other questions. So if we know that there is a car, ABC, one, two, three license plate that just robbed the grocery store, are we able to type that in there and see which way that car is going?
Yeah, we can do partial plate searches. We can do just vehicle description searches, so we don't even have to add a plate. We can say we're looking for the red Toyota Camry or whatever like that, this, about this time, and we can, we can data mine what we have in storage and figure it out that way as well.
Cool. And the last one, retention. That's usually a big deal now with government is, so we don't have responsibility of keeping this stuff for ten years?
No, we do not. And also, I was getting into that with the next part is we do have a policy that should be next in your packet, already pre-designed for us. So within this policy, we have, I think it's on page two here. We are, we are gonna dump all of our information after thirty days. This, this information that we have in the system is confidential because it is access information. It has, you know, names, favors, whatever it could be, so we can't release them. So I think it was, and Kristen mentioned the transparency portal that we could do a link onto our website. And then we could say, share our general statistics with our program. There's a section for policies and what our policies are, what do we, what do we detect, what we don't detect? And the usage and how we're using it, and it specifically shows like how many, how many vehicles were captured, license plates were captured in that thirty days' time, or how many hits we got or something like that. So I think that's an important piece that'll help the community look at these numbers and see this more than work.
But if we do download the information for a case, we gotta keep.
We would, we would download for a case, and then if we've received a public disclosure request for that information, then we'd be physically blocking some things out in the report or whatever that was about disclose, which is the access information.
All right, sounds great to me. I like to talk about money, but I got your other question to probably first.
Yeah, of course I have questions. It was in Washington, so I have questions about the dollar.
I'll defer to Kristen on solar power in Washington.
We are in Washington.
Because they do, these cameras have a battery backup.
Yes, and they actually only require about four hours of direct sunlight. And if that shouldn't happen, then we do have battery backup. We haven't had any issues operating in the state of Washington. And as mentioned, we're probably in a little over sixty-one communities currently. Um we haven't had any issues operating in the state of Washington and um as mentioned, we're probably in a little over sixty-one um communities currently. Thank you.
And then also. Will this program work with their existing computers or?
It'll work with their existing.
It'll work with ours. Okay, that's a good thing. So I'm like, oh, okay. And then um what would be our timeline to get this online, get this going?
After approval, I I think we're looking at somewhere around two to three months.
Okay, so fairly quickly, okay.
Any other questions? Well.
Okay, Dan, one of them. I apologize that the uh quote was not in your uh packet. That's my oversight. One of the most important parts, Andy.
Mayor Deputy Mayor City Council. So flock has given us a uh a quote. This is a twenty-four month subscription uh term, so two years. Uh it's three thousand dollars per camera. There is some startup fees that uh pretty nominal based upon if we can use existing QD poles or if they have their own poles, but. Overall, this is probably a difference of maybe two thousand dollars. So a two-year term would be seventy-six thousand eight hundred and that breaks down to forty thousand eight hundred dollars the first year. And then the second year, since everything's already installed, uh it'd be thirty-six thousand dollars for the seventh year. We have uh applied for two grants recently. The Washington State Commerce Department, uh which we were within one point five points of uh getting a grant. So that tells us is the first grant that we applied for that tells us that we're we're very, very close. Um which was a fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh we also just applied for a Washington State Auto Debt Group grant. Uh there was no monetary amount on there, but we gave the request. Forty thousand eight hundred for the first year and we're still waiting to hear if that will be available to us. And then on the horizon, it has to be wait to see if we get these grants. We have a Washington State Homeland Security Grant. That's due on August thirtieth. Normally, I'd like to wait to see if we got the out of that, not if we were applying for a seven one. And then next year, we have a smart leasing initiative grant through the Department of Justice, and we also have a law enforcement pursuit technology grant. Through these Washington State economists again for uh thirty thousand dollar grant that's available for us to apply for.
With that being said, how much do we need to account for?
I think to be fair, it's, you know, we're applying for grants. There's always a possibility that we may not get the grants. What I've noticed is that uh flock is incredibly popular right now in Washington State. Um seems like everyone's getting it. As everyone's getting it, everyone's applying for the exact same grants. So uh by the Thomas Grant, I think they told me there's like thirty-six agencies that have applied. I might be out by number two, there's like fourteen that uh that received grant funds. So I think we probably put the worst and that's if you get absolutely no grant funding at all. And so that would be forty thousand eight hundred dollars. It's billable upon um. The signing. So the first year is a voice that upon signing with water. And then the second year, you get thirty-six thousand dollars.
Are we still looking okay with the one time funding?
Thank you, Mayor. That's where I want to go. This isn't a budgeted item this year. So we do not budget this in twenty-four. This would be a new expenditure. We'd have to find existing funds, whether that's reserve uh balance or refined efficiencies with the existing budget now. The the twelve cameras again indicated are kind of. Start the starter kit, I guess, if you will. Um it could be, it can be reduced somewhat. Obviously, reduce the coverage that could um. That could reduce the cost. You can implement more over time, you know, much as you could if you started with twelve and want to implement more for the vehicles, the community. So. With the council's input tonight, what we do is we go back to the drawing board. We start crunching numbers. We understand who we are. Hopefully, we find some support through the budget process or through the good grant process, but it becomes a priority from council to our best to find uh. An implementable program that's uh that we can that we can support financially to the general.
I mean, I don't know what price you put on finding a missing child, a kidnapped child. I mean, I think I think it's really a small amount. Okay.
Down uh we're down three officers. Years.
You know, we all back if we get it. You guys are up against it quite a bit. If somebody had a license being stolen, they might just turn around and drive around, but. On a stolen vehicle, you know, I will flush him and call him a little later before he committed more crimes in my community.
Yeah, I don't know anybody that says, oh, I wish it would have taken them longer, right?
So whatever tools we can provide to help, I'm, please support both.
Yeah, not cool.
Um. So this project came forward from last year when I was at the FBI National Academy. And uh the presentation was done among my peers a couple of times and this is what really alerted to me. And so the one thing when I came back from there. Was uh if I put all my eggs in one basket and asked for one program, it was this program because I saw the success of it. I've yet to see a single agency in Washington State uh pull back from their flock installations. Um uh Centralia had talked with uh they had, they got the cameras and the chief um. Actually, they said, you know, we'll find the funding for this. How important they found that it works for them. Um there's also another agency in eastern Washington that they were looking at significant budget cuts. And during those budget cuts, they were actually looking at increasing their cameras to even more because of how popular Flock was. If I saw that um agencies about Washington State were reducing their cameras, uh that would tell me it's probably a program that went forward for us. And that seemed just the opposite. And if you go home today and you Google flock cameras news and read the articles. Even from today, there's absolutely no way.
Uh well, I think it's important. Um I I mean, if we could use reserves to to get it started and hope for the grants to pay it back. Um do that. I I think it's important. I think sounds great. And but what is the um cost per camera, not per camera? Adding cameras down the road for the for the annual service. Is it gonna keep increasing that annual service?
So the price of cameras last are uh before this term.
Not the cameras. To have more cameras.
The subscription service is tied into it's it's basically free intercharge per camera.
It's a leased camera essentially and we pay for the subscription just to. So essentially, three thousand dollars per camera at this rate. And then there's the initial installation. There's initial fee for installation depending on if you use. Term infrastructure, current poll, part of PD or if new infrastructure has to be.
Is a hundred and fifty dollars if they put it on an existing pole is six hundred and fifty dollars if they.
Just don't have my question. So I'm sure that 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 we're paying part of this thirty-six thousand dollars a year is. Is for them monitoring us using the system. So what is that gonna go up with five more cameras? One more camera, ten more cameras?
Good cost is kind of the third camera. So the actual access to uh the software. Is is free included in the cost of the camera. So if we had ten cameras, our whole outdoor cost is thirty thousand. Right? If we have, you just have to buy three per camera.
Three thousand. Yep, twelve cameras, thirty-six.
Every year.
Yeah, correct.
And if I could.
Okay, yeah.
If I could just add a little bit to that. Um so since twenty seventeen, we have only had one price increase to our cameras and that was. Approximately a year ago, and I know flock is really dedicated to um working with communities. We wanted to make this system affordable for many communities. Uh because of the impact that we have. So if that's helpful, we um it's very rare that we increase our price per camera per year.
So I'm still only asked my question. So if we had twenty-four cameras, are we paying seventy thousand dollars a year?
And three thousand dollars per camera.
Okay.
No matter how many cameras.
Okay, yeah. Every, okay, got it. That that.
Yep.
I'm slow. I'm tired.
We want you, we want you to be in present form as possible. So please, please ask again if we haven't answered your question.
But that's something we would have to put into the budget for future. I mean, it's great if we get a grant out, but there's no guarantee that. You know, a couple of years down the road from now, those grants are still out there for them and we would have to.
But that's right. And we we just did budget requests. Actually, that was my number one item on the budget request was thirty-six thousand dollars a year for for block cars. I think I was a second behind the police unit.
Any questions about funding? Is there a question to let staff look at?
I think it's important. It's a force multiplier. I think it's it's cost effective in the long run. Um but I think it's uh something we should pursue. And if we don't like it in two years, we get rid of it in pieces, right? Like it's a two-year contract. So. If we like it, we keep it. You know, let it go. Um but I think right now it's uh. What the community needs and it's what the our officers really want and first thing in their priority. So. I'd like to go with the experts on this one and I like suggesting um that we pursue this.
All right, okay.
I agree.
All right, I think you've got it, Kevin. Oh, six, sorry.
Appreciate it. What we'll do is we'll kind of go to the drawing board. Again, we have a uh a leadership meeting tomorrow. For the initial budget requests. So we're gonna go through budget requests from each department, um start prioritizing those, start understanding. What that means in totality across all funds, particularly the general fund. Uh as we've expressed before, uh the general fund, you know, progressively it gets tighter and tighter as we move along, but. Uh we know the council, council priorities, strategic priorities, um one of the top priorities is public safety. I mean, Davis is. You know, obviously, it wouldn't come before you tonight uh without rising to importance from our our police department and meeting council strategic goals. So you wanna. Make sure that we provide you with the opportunity to make a informed decision. Looks difficult. Go and press some wonders and bring some potential solutions back to you.
And if we uh want this maybe a quarterly report on how it's working.
That's the great part. The the data is is, you know, is mindable and usable and and it's not gonna take us a whole lot of work to be able to provide you that information at the same time. So it's um. It's gonna be used fairly on the back end where it's not eating up some officer's time, uh just in my that data by council group.
I have one question for the sheriff. Get the county to pitch in a little bit.
What town? Gonna do their own?
Where would we prioritize?
No, I'm saying with with our in our system, you know, are they are they gonna be alerted as well, the sheriffs?
If they have access to the.
Correct. So any agency, we can share that data. So if we upload a vehicle that was involved in a crime here and we need to know that vehicle goes back to a flock camera in. Centralia. Centralia PD gets notified, we get notified. Um and then I just.
So you'd be calling them if they have a an assault out on Harson Island and that plate comes into town. You're you're gonna call Ryan and say, hey, if you're, they're gonna know about it automatic.
We have our major crimes task force that we put together recently as well and we'd be sharing that information. Uh. This has been my question is, Katie, I think the county should have some too, but where do we put them? When we've got Lake Cushman with seven thousand lots, three thousand people that take news up there. We've got a thousand lots at uh. Lakeland Village in Allen. We've got all these different homeowners associations. So basically what's been happening is a homeowners association is all purchasing them. And giving us access to their. So that's gonna tie all the county in. Uh and there's more and more of that occurring because people are tired of being big with life.
I guess a great point, Sheriff. This may, we can build private public partnerships potentially with this program. So whether it's a large retailer. A homeowners association or something like that, they can potentially enter into an agreement with the city of Shelton. To place a camera or camera sponsor camera, whatever you want to call it, and um add add that level of security to. Wherever that location is at the same time too, I think.
Next door, you know. I was talking with Doug Diddy from Walmart yesterday about this. Uh and uh also Ryan from O C U is interested in looking at this as well. So.
I mean, some self-talking about it.
They were very interested in the prospects of what this could do for for community safety. Absolutely, yes.
I'm sorry. What's important if if and when we do provide more information, you want to roll this out more. You know, in a more public forum, provide, you know, a dashboard on our website or whatever that might be. So. People fully understand what this platform means. In other communities, um they've had some greater public forums. There's been some a little bit of resistance. If you will, because they they're not real familiar with what the program is. They might think it has those biometrics. It might. Might be facial recognition, might be speeding cameras and things like that. We really need to communicate with our public so they fully understand. What the purpose is, how it's being implemented.
If you're driving a stolen car, you got nothing to worry about.
Or there's no camera alert or anything in your vehicle.
So um just make sure I'm clear on on one thing. So once we have the flock system and agreements with other agencies across the state or wherever. Um once we enter in data about somebody that we're looking for, if it passes one of their cameras, we'll get an immediate notification or near immediate.
They'll get notified and.
Okay, and but it sounds like it's helped now. So right now, it's a it's a phone call or they might get a notification and they might have the time to call. Is that kind of one of the big things that'll change or?
So right now, if um. If we had a crime here, I would, if we had a suspect vehicle, I would probably call an agency that has flock cameras.
Okay.
And just say, can you do me a favor? Run this plate for me and see if it's triggered any of the cameras. That's probably what I'd be.
Perfect, okay.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Does the council have any new items to discuss tonight? I guess not. Well, then this uh study session is adjourned at six forty-seven PM.